Fiscal affairs to order. Good afternoon, everyone. It'll be, the meeting will be broken up into three parts. We have the Committee on Fiscal Affairs, the Subcommittee on Audit, and then the Subcommittee on Investments. So, starting first with the Fiscal Affairs, approval of the minutes of our meeting on January 5th, 2015. I'll move it.
Second.
Any questions or comments? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have approval of one item, item 1A, excuse me, 1B, which is a resolution that enables eligible veterans to charge the same tuition rate as New York City, excuse me, as New York residents, to the extent required under federal and/or state law effective June 1st, 2015. While CUNY already has a similar policy, this new resolution will put our veterans' tuition policy strictly in line with the new federal and state requirements which were issued this past August. This policy supersedes our June 24th, 2013 policy. It will be effective June 1, 2015, so it can start with the summer 2015 term. I'll move this item. Do you have a second?
Second.
And questions? Work here. You promised me work. Anybody have any questions? What is our policy?
In June 2013, we enacted a new policy because federal regulations had changed regarding charging non-resident students the in-state rate. And so, the policy up until this point was that non-resident veterans had 18 months that they would be charged the in-state rate, and they would have 18 months to establish residency in New York State, and then therefore, of course, be charged the in-state rate. Since June 2013, the state and the federal government have both changed their regulations, making it more flexible for non-resident students to be charged the in-state rate. And so, this resolution is just bringing our policy in line with state and federal guidelines. So, we're really happy that this change has been affected by the state government and we're able to help our students in any way we can.
Do we know how many veterans we have currently, or have had in the last couple of years?
Yeah, our student affairs folks estimate that we have a little over 4,000 student veterans and reservists throughout the university community.
Items on the table. Any other questions or comments?
So, we will be consistent with state and federal law when we implement this in the summer 2015 term, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Motion's on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, I turn it over to Vice Chancellor Sapienza to give us a review of the 2015-16.
It's not under us?
It's C.
Yeah, can I see your book? This is not on the...
I'm sorry. We have this resolution for the law school.
It only have to eight.
Hmm? It doesn't exist on what I was sent. Hold on one second. Okay. So, this is...
It's in the book just before the minutes.
It's a resolution.
Yep, give me two seconds. So, it's a resolution for the purchase of goods and services under a state contract. The trustees of the university authorizes the CUNY School of Law to purchase goods and services to upgrade the audiovisual system of the law school's David Fields auditorium and the addition of the video and teleconference capture systems from a vendor authorized under an existing New York State Office of General Services contract pursuant to law and university regulations. Such projects shall not exceed $800,000, chargeable to the appropriate CUNY First Code for the law school. I'll move this motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. No, that's okay. Okay, now we have an information item.
Thank you, Chair Lona. And good afternoon again, everyone. About 10 days ago, the governor issued his executive budget for fiscal year 15-16, so we want to spend a few minutes today going through what was in the budget for higher ed and specifically how that impacts CUNY. Another chancellor at our last full board meeting last week gave remarks on the budget. We also have issued an analysis to all the trustees and to the presidents at the CUNY website, if anyone would like to take a look at it. And it's also at each of your seats. So, that's what I'm going to go through this morning, this afternoon, rather, is the analysis. So, we'll start with the senior colleges. And for the senior colleges, the executive budget proposal would increase the year-to-year appropriation for senior colleges by a little over $70 million, which is a 3.1% increase. The $70 million is comprised of two major sources, one of which is additional tuition revenue. The higher ed agreement in 2011 called for five years of tuition increases of both CUNY and SUNY of $300 per year. The fall 2015 semester increase of $300, which has already been approved by the Board of Trustees, that's the last year of the five-year increases. The law expires in June 2016. So, after that point, we do not have authorization from the state to increase tuition. So, I wanted to make sure that this is the year coming up of those increases. So, the tuition is about $60.8 million. About 8.4 of that $60.8 million is needed to cover the gap between our, what our tuition rate will be at the senior colleges and the maximum TAP award. We're legally mandated to cover that difference, and that's 8.4 million, leaving about $52 million available. The other major component of the year-to-year increase of senior colleges is $12 million for college performance improvement plans, which was part of one of several major new initiatives that the governor announced for higher ed for fiscal '16. And in just a couple of minutes, I'm going to get into those in more detail. There were some items that were funded, that were funded by the legislature in the current year that the governor did not include in his executive budget. $1.1 million for the SEEK program and $1 million for the Joseph Murphy Institute, which is at our school. Similar thing happened in last year's budget process, and the legislature put it back. And so, we're certainly hopeful and optimistic that the legislature will add that again for fiscal '16. And then, very important, the executive budget also did not provide any funding for any of our mandatory cost increases. So, things like building rentals, energy costs were not in there and haven't been for the last several years. But two items I want to point out. One is salary... Professional staff congress is part of the contract that's been agreed to with them that's been approved by both the state and city. The faculty members and the higher education officer folks move up steps. And so, every year, there are increments that they move up until they reach the maximum. And that costs our senior colleges about eight million, an additional $8 million every year. Historically, this, these incremental costs have been covered by the state, but starting in fiscal year 2012, that funding stopped. And so, we had been self-funding that, those costs for the last several years. They're contractual costs. And so, that's creating a burden on our colleges. This year, the state executive budget also did not include funding for fringe benefits increases. And this was the first year that the executive budget did not cover fringe benefit costs, increased costs for fringe benefits. We are projecting that that cost is going to be about $25 million next year. And so, if the budget is adopted on April 1st with a flat fringe benefits budget, we're going to begin the fiscal year with a shortfall of $25 million. So, that's something that we're very concerned about. And again, will be part of our discussions going forward to April 1st and the state adoption. Okay, so that's the senior college summary. On page two of the analysis of the community college summary?
Excuse me, Matt. The shortfall's 33, right? The 25 plus the 8 for the salary step?
Yes, correct, correct. We've been, we've been self-funding the salary step increments the last several years, but you're right, that would be added on to the 25 million.
Add the 8 million for rentals.
Building rentals is due to go up by 8 million as well. Energy is due to go up on the energy side. We, two years ago, decentralized those budgets to the colleges, and our senior colleges have a good job in managing those costs and making sure that they're staying within the plan. But yes, building rentals, salary increments, fringe benefits, all of those mandatory cost increases are not included in the executive budget.
So, this is a back-to-the-futures budget, right? We're going back to the old days where the tuition is covering cost increases.
Well, that's certainly our concern, is that, you know, we think that the spirit of the agreement in 2011... And so that our students can feel the benefit of those additional tuition dollars that they were paying. So, that's the concern, as Professor Montella said, is that we don't want the tuition to be used to cover mandatory cost increases. Again, the community college side, the state executive budget proposed that the state base aid formula remain the same for next year. The community colleges are funded on a... Full-time equivalent student is reimbursed. CUNY and SUNY receive state dollars for that. This year's amount is $2,497 per student FTE. The governor's proposed that remains the same for next year. The university, in its budget request that was approved by the Board of Trustees, called for an increase of $250 per year in the community college base aid rate for each of the next three years. That was something new that we proposed this year. We asked for the year increase for two main motivations for that. One was because we want our community colleges to have the ability to do multi-year planning, and if they know that there's a commitment to increase the base aid over three years, that they can do some real multi-year financial planning. Second motivation is that when you look at the base aid amount of $2,497 and compare that to where we were in 2009, with $178 per FTE below where we were in 2009, the $2,497 base aid per FTE was $2,675. And recession took place. The state did four years' worth of budget cuts, took down the community college base aid in each of those years. We've been fortunate, and in the last few years, the legislature has been creeping that number back up. But we're still way below where we were in 2009, and we want to get to at least that point and beyond. And so, we're asking for $250 a year for three years. SUNY community colleges have put forth the same request. Base aid was increased due to enrollment decreases. Doesn't necessarily mean our enrollment at the community colleges is down. It's kind of flattened out over the last couple of years, but the, a number that the state was counting in its financial plan was higher than what our actual enrollment is, and so that adjustment was made. Just like the senior colleges, some legislative additions that were in this year's budget are not included by the governor in next year's executive proposal. The one that we're most concerned about is for the ASAP program. The legislature had $7 million to supplement the funding that we received from the City of New York for the last several years. Governor did not include that in his budget. I think you all know about the ASAP program, how successful it's been, how it's getting national attention. President Obama mentioned it when he talked about his free community college tuition proposal. And so, that's a critical piece that needs to be added back in the adopted budget. Other legislative items that were not in there, child, community college childcare centers, $544,000 was not in there, and the college discovery program, $27,000. There's also a million for community school grants, which again, I'm going to get into in just a minute. On financial aid, there were no changes proposed to the tuition assistance program. But as I mentioned earlier, there were several new initiatives that the governor proposed for higher education in his budget proposal, and those are listed beginning on page three. The first one are performance improvement plans. And so, what the governor's calling for here is for community colleges to submit plans where they will describe how they're going to improve access, completion rates, post-graduation outcomes, and a host of other metrics. We already have a process in place that we've had for better than a dozen years or so here at CUNY called the Performance Management Process, the PNP. So, we do a lot of this already. For the senior colleges, the governor had proposed a new $12 million that would be made available and are submitted for next year. So, we're pleased that there's an additional $12 million to help our senior colleges achieve these plans. For the community colleges, there was no new money put up for the performance improvement plans, but the community colleges do have to comply with this, if this proposal is passed as part of adoption. The other thing I want to point out here is that the language states that for both CUNY and SUNY, 10% of the operating... In the community colleges will be held in reserve by the state until the plans are submitted. So, that's something to be aware of, and something that we've been talking with folks in Albany about is this part of the proposal whereby 10% of the total appropriation will be held in reserve until the plans are submitted.
Does that mean approved or just submitted?
The language for next year, for the, that's included in the executive budget, for next year, it would be when the plans are submitted, the 10% will be released.
So, basically, we get it halfway through the fiscal year, we shouldn't have a cash flow impact?
Correct.
Shouldn't be.
Correct. The governor also proposed...
Was that requirement also for SUNY?
Correct. SUNY had the same requirement. And for SUNY, their senior colleges have $18 million available to them, which proportionally is the right amount. 18 for SUNY, 12 for CUNY. On the community colleges, as I mentioned earlier, the executive budget is proposing two $500,000 grants for CUNY community colleges to participate in a community schools initiative. And the motivation here is to try to make the community colleges really the hubs of their community, so that the community colleges would be able to provide health care to, on its campuses, they would be able to assist students in transportation, they would provide elder care, childcare. I know a lot of our community colleges already provide some of these services, but there's two $500,000 grants that have been made, that have been made available as part of the executive budget that our community colleges can compete for for next year.
A question on the community school grants. Is this two $500,000 grants within the five boroughs or within the state?
No, it's two for the CUNY community colleges.
Specifically for the CUNY school.
Right, and for SUNY, there were three that were made available. Also, the governor is proposing to streamline new education program approval whereby when colleges, both CUNY and SUNY colleges, put in new program approvals, that instead of it being approved by the state education department and the Board of Regents, that the only approval would be required to be the Board of Trustees at both CUNY and SUNY. That's not something that we have really lobbied for or have felt a problem with in terms of... But the proposal is in there, something that, again, we're taking a deeper look at and talking to folks up in Albany to understand what the implications of that would be. Governor also proposed to achieve efficiencies through back-office consolidations. What this proposal would call for would be to consolidate back-office functions like human resources, IT, and finance at the CUNY and SUNY systems. Again, we're talking to folks to understand what this would be, certainly always open to finding ways to be more efficient. And I think we've done a really good job here at CUNY in terms of centralizing a lot of our campus functions to promote efficiencies and to make sure that those savings are being driven into the instructional areas. And so, that, again, we'll take a deeper look at. We're really...
The back office, are they at all thinking about a merger of back offices between the state system and the city system, or is it just each one individually consolidated?
They talked about consolidating. They haven't talked, they haven't, the language doesn't talk about merging the functions of the two systems, but just finding ways to consolidate and to be, to find efficiencies.
Alan, you should have fun explaining CUNY First to them and what's been going on here for the last six years.
Say, I'm going to add 54 more campuses to CUNY First.
We're really pleased that the governor included in his proposal support for the Dream Act, something that he has been supportive of over the last many years. And so, the governor included that in his proposal, and we're really happy to see that. The governor also put forth a new financial aid program called the Get on Your Feet Loan Forgiveness Program. So, under this program, students who attend colleges in New York State and graduate and continue to live in New York and earn less than $50,000 per year, if they participate in the federal Pay as You Earn program, which stretches out and reduces the federal debt that students have, if they earn less than $50,000. The state proposal is that they would cover the difference for the first two years. So, essentially, graduates who find themselves in that situation, the first two years would not pay any debt after graduation. Again, here at CUNY, we're very fortunate that only about 15% of our students actually graduate with federal loans. But again, any proposal that would help students with... Accustomed to getting into the workplace and paying off their federal debt is welcome.
Matt, those first two years of support, is it principal and interest?
Yes, yes. They would cover the first two years. And like I said, the federal program helps students, then it stretches it out, rather than paying over 10 years. If you earn less than $50,000, you pay over 20. And so, if you earn less than $50,000 for those 20 years, you actually end up paying a lot less than what you actually would owe. Financial aid letters is another thing that the governor put forth, and the motivation here is really to make things more transparent, more clear for students and their families in terms of what the actual cost of attending an institution in New York State would be. We do this already at CUNY. Our letters that are sent out to our students throughout our campuses are standardized. So, again, if this is passed as part of the adopted budget, wouldn't be too much for us to do here. But again, we're taking a deeper look at the language to make sure that we'll be in compliance. And then, the last item on here is to create sustainable, high-quality teacher pipelines. The executive budget proposed $3 million to support the creation of a New York teacher residency program. And there was another $3 million that was provided for tuition scholarships for graduate students who are in education programs at CUNY and SUNY colleges and who, upon graduating and agree to teach in New York for five years. So, again, on all of these proposals, we are combing through the language, we're having discussions with folks in the governor's office, folks in position of budget, make sure that we understand the implications. I'm sure they'll, that these proposals, in addition to the budget, will garner a great deal of discussion with folks in the Assembly and the Senate as we get closer to budget adoption. The chancellor, he'll be testifying in front of the Assembly and Senate on the budget. So, we look forward to that and happy to take any additional questions on the budget as we go forward.
In the language that you're reviewing, is there any explanation for things that are eliminated or reduced? And I'll use ASAP as an example.
It's not, it's not included in that?
Yeah.
This is, this is the dance that occurs between the governor and the legislature. Legislative ads, generally speaking, are automatically deleted from the executive budget because there is the assumption that the legislature's going to put it back. That is a historic way that governors, not just this governor, does business, and only in extremely rare situations will that not happen. But that's, that's all it is. It's not a reflection at all on ASAP. This is true involving many agencies of state government where the legislature acts, adds some money during the... It automatically gets taken out.
Thank you.
One more thing I wanted to add, oh, I'm sorry, Mary. Go ahead. One more thing I wanted to add about the budget is you also have a document in front of you that's a gold-colored document. And if you open that up, you see CUNY's state operating budget priorities, as well as, as well as capital budget priorities are listed here as well. And this is a document that we'll be using as part of our lobbying efforts with the Assembly and the Senate. And most of these are, if you want to point, on the inside-left cover, faculty and staff mandatory costs. We do have language in there regarding collective bargaining. We know that this has been something that we've talked about previously, and so we want to make sure that the legislature is aware of the issues that we're having regarding getting a collective bargaining contract funded. We've included some of the items that we have in our budget request, new programmatic initiatives like online education and international education. There, the funding was provided on the capital side to build the building, we're now requesting funds to cover the operating costs of that center. Some of the student success initiatives we have there as well, and then the restorations that we talked about. So, again, this will be an important summary document for us going forward towards adoption.
Mary?
Yeah, I had a question. In the beginning, you mentioned June 2016, the law will expire for the tuition increase.
Correct.
Is there any plan for 2016? Or maybe not planned, but it's being considered?
Yeah, the, in fall 2015, tuition, the last of the five-year increases will take effect in fall 2015, this fall semester coming up. $300 increase.
And is that 300 both for the senior college tuition on community colleges?
Correct.
And in-state and out-of-state students?
They will increase proportionally. So, the rates for non-residents, for graduate students, part-time students, it'll all increase the value.
And that 300 for next fall has already been approved by the board?
Correct.
The board did a five-year tuition budget five years ago, yeah.
Their, the executive proposal includes the appropriation for these funds for next year.
I assume that some, we're talking to the governor about extending the compact. So, we...
Rational planning.
Rational planning.
Right.
Opportunity and so forth.
And I think, you know, we want to start those discussions, you know, as part of this legislative session. Even though the law doesn't expire until next year, we certainly want to begin those discussions as part of this legislative session.
After 2016, what would be the plan? So, there will be no tuition increase?
Let me go back a little bit. Five years ago, there was a plan developed that would normally go up so everybody knew what the tuition would be. That ends with 2015. The thought is to go back to the legislature and to the governor to create another program so that everyone knows what the tuition is and limits it to that level and work with them on that. So, as Matthew was just saying, we're not going to wait till next year. We'll begin that process of discussion this year. Okay? Great. Thanks, Matt. On the agenda for the Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting, we'll now move to the Subcommittee on Audit. All yours.
Okay. Subcommittee on Audit is now in session. We have two action items. The first is approval of the minutes of the meeting on November 3rd, 2014. I would move that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the passes. The second, are the, are the auditors here? Maryam?
They were not able to come in because of weather, but they are dialing in now as we speak.
Okay.
All right, so if you give them about a minute or two, hopefully, they will dial in.
So, then we'll miss out on the normal dynamic presentation that auditors are famous for.
Yes, but they will do the presentation over the telephone even more so. So, we'll have a slightly different experience as opposed to having...
Does anybody need a coffee yet?
KPMG, Jason Spiegel.
Has joined the conference.
Welcome.
Hi, Jason.
Hi, Maryam. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Jason?
Shelley, Matt. Has joined the conference.
Hello.
All right, Shelley, it's Peter Petaleo. How are you?
Hi, Peter. Good. How are you?
Good. You're on the phone, on the record, in the Audit Subcommittee meeting. You have, are on the agenda for one action item and one information item. The action item is a presentation by you of the... The action item is a presentation by you of the A133 draft audit report, and then we'll ask the committee to approve that. And then an information item after that approval is your presentation of the...
Yes, that's correct.
So it's all yours.
Okay, all right. First, I do apologize for not being able to be there in person. So I am going to go through the PowerPoint presentation, which reviews the results on our A133 audit, and everybody should have received a draft of the A133 audit report. And I just wanted to make one comment about that. There were some pages that were missing after the first opinion and before page 62, and those are coming from the issued financial statements that we reviewed with the committee back in November or December. And they are issued with the A133 report, but are the same exact report that we have already reviewed again. So moving on to slide two of the PowerPoint presentation. Objective of our A133 audit is threefold. That first, we do determine whether the schedule of expenditures of federal awards is fairly presented in relation to CUNY's financial statements, and the schedule of federal awards was included on page 62 in the draft report. We do also obtain an understanding of internal control over compliance for each major program. We do assess control risk and then perform tests of controls for all of the different requirements that we're auditing for each of the major programs. And lastly, we determine whether CUNY has complied with the laws and regulations and provisions of contracts and grant agreements pertaining to the federal awards that we are auditing, and we are focused on looking for material non-compliance. Moving on to slide three, not going to go through this in detail, but there is a determination that is [inaudible] what major programs we are going to be auditing for the university, and there's a calculation that we have to perform, and that calculation is determined by OMB, and we follow that guidance. And there were two Type A programs, and we have to assess risk on those, and they were both determined to be high-risk, which means that we have to look at two major programs this year. And if you turn to the next slide, the two major programs are [inaudible]. Always audited student financial assistance, and we will always be auditing student financial assistance. That is determined to be a major program because of the risk of the program and the percentage of coverage over the total federal expenditure. There was a new major program this year. So something that we always have to be mindful of is whether or not any of the individual colleges have administered any grants on their own that would be required to go on universities that are not the research foundation. As you know, the research foundation has the bulk of the federal expenditure, and they are separately audited. So this year, there was a program by the name of the Economic Development Initiative, and it was administered by City College, and it did meet the requirements to be a major program because it had not been audited in the past. Okay. Moving on to slide five. The areas that were focused on are compliance and internal control procedures. I'm not going to go through these in detail because we have been auditing student financial assistance in the past, and I'm sure you are familiar with the compliance requirements that we have been auditing. But I just wanted to focus your attention on the special tests and provisions. This is one area that usually requires SFA to be a high-risk program because there are quite a few special tests and provisions that the university maintains compliance with, and then we are required to audit them. But if we turn to slide six, this includes the compliance requirements that we are testing for the new major program at City College this year. And we are going to be focused on the activities and the costs and looking at the expenditures to ensure that they have been allowable and spent in accordance with the grant and the cost principles. We also are [inaudible] to ensure that City College appropriately drew down the funds. Because of the nature of the costs, there were quite a few pieces of equipment, and we have to ensure that that equipment was properly tagged and identified in the university's records as being from a federal source. We're also looking at period of availability to ensure that the expenditures were made during the grant period. And procurement, there were... These had to be procured, and we're looking to ensure that they were following proper procurement policies. And lastly, we will look at reports that were submitted and ensure that they were timely and accurately submitted. So moving on to page seven. The top of page seven includes some information about the conduct of our audit and then the results. So we do conduct this audit in accordance with auditing standards that are generally [inaudible] and those standards that are applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards. So that is no different from the conduct of the financial statement audit. It's the next bullet that is unique to the A133 audit, and that relates to the conduct of our audit of compliance for the major programs, and that is done in accordance with federal OMB circular A133. So to sum up the results of our audit, we have one finding, and this is for enrollment reporting. It is one of the special tests in student financial assistance costs. And we did note that for four out of 119 students, the enrollment activity was not timely reported to NSLBS. And then lastly, on this page, I have included some pending matters. We are in the process currently of completing the test work over [inaudible] one at City College. To date, we have no, you know, additional findings noted, but if there are any additional findings noted from this point forward until we issue the report, we do plan to send an updated draft to the committee via email if there are additional findings noted. And then the last two pending matters are just once the test work over the Economic Development Initiative grant is complete, the [inaudible] will take place, and then we will update our down-to-date procedures from the timing of the issuance of the financial statement. So it's required that we perform a subsequent events review. So that concludes the discussion over the A133 audit. There was one remaining slide in here that I think we had discussed in the past that relates to some changes that are going to be happening with the A133 audits going forward. We recently held a training seminar to cover these topics, and there were members of CUNY management present at the seminar, so we have been going through these with them in more detail than you see on the slide here. But a piece of this will be effective for the June 30, 2015 audit, and then there are other pieces that take effect one year later for the June 2016 audit. I'd be happy to take any questions on the A133 audit. Is that all right?
Professor Martel.
How close are we to finishing the audit of the Economic Development Initiative? Is it 90%, 80%, 20%? We're all in?
I would say 50%.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the 133?
We will need an approval at the end.
Sherry, what is the audit [inaudible] to 750,000? What does that mean for the audit? You only look at programs that are spending more than 750,000? Is that what it means?
Are you referring to the last slide of my presentation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. That refers to the overall audit and the expenditures of an organization. And currently, an organization does not need an A133 audit unless they expend more than 500,000, up to 750.
Well, is the organization CUNY?
No. No, any substantial...
No. Any organization. So this is not impacting you because you already exceed far greater than 750,000.
And did I pick up on an earlier slide that you're only looking at grant and contract programs that exceed 300,000?
That are in the university.
Yes. So anything that's [inaudible] is what's called a Type A program, and we assess Type A programs for risk, and in your instance, they were both high-risk and required to be audited. All other programs are considered a Type B program, and we are not required to audit those, you know, unless we need, like, percentage of coverage, et cetera, and we did not need to. So the only two programs that we actually audited were SFA and the Economic Initiative.
But presumably, [inaudible] grants less than 300,000, is that correct?
Oh, yeah.
To make sure that reports are filed in a timely way and the grant terms are being met and so on. So it's not like things under 300,000 don't get any monitoring or any review?
Yeah.
They do get monitored, and they show up on page, if I can find it. It's the page that shows the SEPA, the schedule. It's on page 62.
62.
Of the report. And we don't have a lot that are under that 300,000 because the bulk of our grants sit on the research foundation, which has their own A133 audit and accountability for that. So the biggest one here that's not being audited this year is the one related to FEMA because that was audited two years ago, Shelly?
Yes, in 2012.
So in 2015, if we have a lot of money for FEMA being [inaudible] or we get approval on the project worksheets for money that we've expended previously, that is likely to be subject to audit.
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any other questions on this topic? Hearing none, I would move approval of item 1B.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It carries. We now have a quick information item, Shelly, on the presentation of the management letter.
Okay. So we have discussed the management letter in draft form during the fall meeting, so we have subsequently issued this in final form as of last week. And again, we do visit certain colleges on a three-year rotation cycle, so the colleges on page one were who we visited this year, and we have, you know, current comments that are addressed [inaudible]. And then what we always do is follow up and provide a status on all of the prior year comments. So any comment that was open last year has been included in the letter with a status at the end of the 14 audit. And a general comment that I will note is many of these comments have been addressed and implemented during the current year. So I think we're going to see the size of this letter next year because probably it has...
Not a bad thing.
That's assuming they don't find anything else.
Okay. Professor Martel.
I want to volunteer to join the group that's doing the accounting policies and procedures manual update so that we can put page of something that's been on this report since 1999.
Thank you.
I'll do that.
Much appreciated.
You too. You got to come too.
Okay, fine. Fair enough. But I'm the tenured, I don't have one.
Any other gratuitous suggestions? Is that... Shelly, is that it for your information report?
Yes, it is.
Thank you, as always. I appreciate it. There's no further business for the committee on audit, subcommittee on audit.
We'll go into the subcommittee on investments. The first item of business is approval of the minutes of our meeting. There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Had left the conference.
Motion approved. I now move to go...
Had left the conference.
Move to go into executive session so that we can have some certain discussions about portfolio review and hedge funds.
We'll have someone calling in as well for that one.
We're out of executive session for the subcommittee on investments, so I'll entertain a motion to go into adjournment for the meeting in total.
So moved.
Second it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I got an email today.